Let us now call to order the last organized meeting of your Hannover Borough Council for the year 2023, and I will request as your chair that we all stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance in unison. We will follow that with a brief moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and you may be seated. Secretary Felix, shall we commence with the calling of the roll?
Okay, Mr. Fuentes, Mrs. Funk.
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt, here. Mr. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Hagberg?
Here.
Mr. Kress?
Here.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Mr. Ricart?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Rupp? Solicitor Schultis?
Here.
Manager Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Whitman? Secretary Felix? Libby Houston? Taya Prasad? We have a quorum.
Thank you. First thing we're going to do on our list is present a leaving counselor with a certificate of appreciation, most of your Gary. Can you guys get us? It says, "Let it be known to all that Gary Greenholt, two-plus years of dedicated service, serving his third ward Hannover Borough Council, October 12, 2021, to December 31, 2023," so a couple more days to make this official, "has exhibited sincere dedication to the public interest of our community and is hereby honored with his certificate of appreciation." Thanks, Gary.
Thank you. I would like to say that to all the council and all the department heads of the borough, including the manager, the solicitor, and the secretary, that it's been a pleasure and an honor. You know, I have great respect for all of you, so appreciate it.
I have one question.
All right.
Does the council discount on dry cleaning and so forth continue?
It could have, but I didn't continue. I'm the one who quit.
Thank you very much, Gary, sincerely for serving.
Okay, we will move into public comment, the first of which I have is Audrey Coppersmith. Audrey, come forward.
Good evening, Audrey Coppersmith, 412 Rose Age Drive, otherwise known as CT4. First of all, I want to say thank you to Eric Maines for distributing via email the concerns and comments that were made by a number of people in the community, as well as some people within the borough with regards to the upcoming CT5 and the planning of that, which will be a meeting that's taking place next Wednesday. So if any and all can be there to share their concerns with CT5, that would be greatly appreciated. The meeting's at 6:30. Secondly, and also for council, I'm sure Eric or Marjorie or anyone will be more than happy to forward this to you as well, so that everybody's on the same page with regards to what might be coming before you in a short period of time. Secondly, with regards to some of the things on CT5, this was CT4, most of you know the many concerns we've had of CT4, which are still ongoing, but the latest one has to do with the surface depressions and pulling up a geological map. It turns out that my house currently sits right next to one of the surface depressions that was unknown to us when we purchased our home. So we are very concerned with the fact that we are sitting right next to one, and we do have a retaining wall, but obviously with two of them right next to each other, that is a great concern to us if, in fact, they would develop sinkholes, just like the two sinkholes that we already had in CT4. There are also three of them located in the CT5 property, including one that is in the flood zone that's already designated by the borough, as well as one at the end of the potential extension of Ash Drive, and then one parallel to, or actually right in line with that. So I just want to bring that to everybody's attention when that consideration is made, because we wouldn't want anybody to end up with dire circumstances or what have you, just because somebody didn't know. So anyhow, but thank you for your time. Thank you for carrying me out all your long and putting up with me. So I'm just caring about the community and wanting to do the best I can to make sure everybody's informed and has a right to be heard. So thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Same to you.
Thank you.
We have Nate Thistle.
Merry Christmas.
We'll just ask you to state your name again and your address for the record, then you can.
Nathaniel Thistle, resident at 311 DeGai Avenue, and I'm also the vice president of the Board of Governors for the Guthrie Memorial Library. We, on behalf of the Board of Governors, just would like to address some concerns that we have, along with library staff, regarding the proposed lease with the Hannover Area Historical Society. Up to this point, we have not had much involvement or consultation with council on the logistics of that lease arrangement. Some of the concerns we have is that the occupation of that space by the historical society will lose two quiet study rooms that are used frequently, four staff members' offices will need to be relocated, we will lose the Hormel Room, which is also very well utilized by the public and for quiet study, and it also has two meeting rooms in that area that are used almost daily by various groups and individuals. Not to mention that this space has been part of the original library since 1911. The teen section would need to be moved or lost, depending, and we are in the middle of fulfilling a grant to renovate and enhance that space. The teen section sees daily action, has 8100 items, and hosts numerous programs per month, and also a rapidly growing teen advisory With the borough ordinance, you know, 55-6, that the use and maintenance of the public library, the borough shall adopt the recommendations of the library governing board, being the Board of Governors, we just ask that you table the execution of the lease until, you know, the Board of Governors and library staff have adequate time to address the logistics and impact that the lease would have on the library's operations.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to comment to council?
Those joining via Zoom are able to unmute yourself if you're calling in. The star six will unmute you.
This is the president, yes, please.
Who am I speaking with? Who wants to address?
Robert Folds, Peter Box, 1131.
Yep, we know you, Bob.
I live in the third ward.
Yep, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time, Mr. President. I hope you all are having a good holidays. I am calling about, I'd like to have the budget and the comprehensive recreation plan removed from the consent agenda, and I want to roll call vote on theirs. The Hannover Council voted in November to advertise the budget for public inspection. When I went to the borough office to inspect it, it wasn't there. There was a summary, but the real budget wasn't there. And when I asked on a write-to-know request for a full copy of the budget to be displayed for the public, I was told, "Well, we can't do that. We need a 30-day extension." And so the public has never really gotten a chance to review the real budget during the public comment period that ended on December 15. It won't be available to the public until after January 1. And so I would like to see a vote of the council members who agree by passing the budget tonight that it's okay to have a budget that's not available for the public before it's approved. In the same manner, I've asked twice for the comprehensive recreation and open space trails plan that's been developed to be open for the public, and that's been denied for some odd reason about can't be shown until it gets approved by the DCNR. If it's such a good deal, if it's such a good plan, I don't know why there's any hesitation about the public being able to see it. Lastly, and this is personal, Mr. President, I am going to implore the council to seriously consider taking some action to ensure that there is a law that prohibits open containers and consumption of alcohol on the streets of the borough. I have no idea what the plan was when there was a beginning of some kind of concept or plan to allow people to walk around on the streets with it, but you're going down a terrible path, and there are people who pay a price for public drunkenness and other activities that result from just unrestrained consumption. And only recently, I've heard that somebody walked into a restaurant on the far reach of Carlisle Street outside of the downtown area, bought some alcohol, walked out with an open container, and got in a motor vehicle and drove with the open container. And you can do whatever you want to do with walking around, but the state is very clear. You can't waive, you can't give an exception to people driving around with an open alcohol container in a vehicle.
Okay, Mr. Holt, if I can ask you to wrap up.
My intent is to make sure that what happened to my family as a result of things that went on in Hannover doesn't happen to more people in the future. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Okay, we'll close public comment and head to the end of the meeting. At this time, the chair requests a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. So motions.
Second.
Any discussion required? All in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Flipping to page...I'm sorry, Mr. Hagberg, sorry. I'm not used to an online counselor. Your vote?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Flipping to page three, I guess we're into reports of standing committees. Counselor Rowland, you're first.
Okay. From the Finance and Personnel Committee, I would respectfully request a consideration of a motion approving ordinance number 2358 for the allocation of Main Street Hannover funding in the amount of $40,000.
Before we take a vote...
Yeah, go ahead, Carol.
Can I ask a question before we turn on this?
Can I just make sure we get a second first, then you can ask as many as you like?
Oh, I'm sorry. I want to make sure.
There's a second? Okay. Question, Carol.
Okay. Since this is an ordinance and not a donation, do we get a progress report for our $40,000 that would benefit Main Street and also us in the community to know where their money is going?
Very good.
They provide a progress report, and we can include it for you, yes, to answer your question, yes.
Would it be even to have them, require them to come to maybe even once a year to come here and sit and give a report so they can hear?
They plan on doing that. We did meet with them after the last meeting where there was some confusion and questioning on how much the donation/ ordinance was. So we did meet with Dan Frye and Nikki Hoffman. Nikki Hoffman handles their finances. She's the treasurer. And they are planning on coming in addressing you folks.
Oh, good. That's a good idea.
So that would be the direct, the executive committee of the board addressing you.
Okay.
And I would like to remind everybody that they did come in during the budget hearing as well to present.
That is true.
The one thing that I'm confused on, when I was at the budget meeting at the library, I was assuming, and according to what we were told on budget, okay, that they wanted an increase of $10,000.
Yes, ma'am.
But at the time, I thought they had said they were on a $30,000 budget, and then it went to 50. So originally, we were at 40. Is this correct?
In 2023.
Because I don't know how I got that idea.
In 2023, the ordinance was for $40,000.
Okay, thank you.
You made the motion, I believe it was the last month of the month before, to keep it at $40,000 for 2024.
Yes, I did. Yes, absolutely. Okay.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, so it's been moved to second. All in favor of the consideration signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Actually, I need a roll call for that, sorry. Secretary Felix? Four.
Mr. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Hagberg?
Sorry, yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes with seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Governance and Policy Committee, Counselor Greenholt, you're making a statement then?
If council would like me to go over the nomination process that we outlined, I'd be happy to do that and answer any questions. It's up to council, though.
All right, okay. So, yeah, so there's no questions?
You don't, Bill, you don't think it's prudent that Tim reviews it? You think everybody's good with it?
Well, I think we're going to adopt it. That's the intention, right?
Right.
With the motion?
We got the outline already.
Yes.
I understand what it is.
Yeah, we're just going to prove it. Okay. Make the motion.
Consideration of a motion adopting the proposed nomination process for council president and vice president for the biannual reorganization meeting, January 2, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
2024.
24.
24.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. So it's 23, but I meant 24.
Okay, so it's 2024.
It does, yeah.
And I have a second, Counselor Funk, was it?
Pauline, please.
All in favor of the consideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Guthrie Memorial Library, at this time, I am going to make the motion to table the consideration and would seek a second for said.
Go to the second, Gary.
Counselor Kress.
All in favor of the motion to table, specifically not the motion, but the motion to table for further consideration later, signify by saying aye at this time.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Opposed.
I'm opposed also.
Counselor Hagberg, Counselor Funk, any other opposition? The motion to table passes.
Do we have a discussion as to why you're wanting to table it after all the work?
Um, it's appropriate for here, isn't it? Yeah. If you're looking to me, Counselor Hagberg, I heard enough from the public comment portion that it sounds like maybe we need to hear some more information from their side that I wasn't aware existed.
Did we not give the borough manager the authority to move forward with what was proposed in the work plan in the document to follow the path that was outlined?
Sure.
I recall the council voting unanimously for that. So I'm kind of wondering why and what the outcome's going to be in this discussion.
I guess we'll find out together, so.
Very well.
Thank you. Moving on, I need a pinch...no, I'm sorry, I have Counselor Kress. He is here. Public Works and Facilities?
Can't you see me?
Yeah, I was reading ahead.
Consideration of a motion approving the co-location lease agreement for the urban wireless program of the County of York for installation of a wireless antenna on the Terrace Avenue elevated water tank conditioned on approval by borough solicitor.
Yeah, so motion that one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Counselor Hagberg, your vote? Four. Motion passes. Thank you, Counselor Kress. Since you're all warmed up, would you like to deliver for Counselor Rupp under safety?
I would love to.
Okay.
Consideration of a motion to approve ordinance number 2359 to prohibit parking along East Chestnut Street in front of the Hannover Market House.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Sounds like everyone wants a second, so.
I like that.
Seeing no requests for discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Under stormwater authority...
We need a...
Oh, we did need a roll call, okay. Let's wind that one back, my bad. Roll call on the prohibited parking along East Chestnut. Secretary Felix?
Mr. Ricart?
Four.
Mr. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Hagberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Seven to zero, the motion passes.
Thank you. Under stormwater, I will make the motion to approve ordinance 2357, amending the Articles of Incorporation for the Borough of Hannover Stormwater Authority to engage in certain biomass facility projects.
Second.
Any discussion on biomass projects? We're going to do this via roll call as well, so Secretary Felix?
Mr. Ricart?
Four.
Mr. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Hagberg?
Abstaining.
No.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Okay, so we have...
Five, four.
We have four in favor of, with one abstaining and one no.
Correct.
So the motion...
So I guess the abstention subtracts the number of, is subtracted from the number of eligible voters?
No.
No.
So how many voted?
Four.
Four.
So that's a majority of council present.
Okay.
Majority of council present, okay.
Motion passes. Turning to page four, mayor's report. There is no mayor, so we'll assume she will give us a full report of December and January next month. Under other matters, we have the final section of public comment. Anyone in the room wish to address council this year yet? Seeing none, community media, is there anyone online who would like to say a word?
Second opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to unmute yourself and address council, may do so at this time. Star six if you're calling.
No.
Yes.
In regards to what Robert was talking about at the beginning of public comment, is there a chance that the total budget can be put out for the people of Hannover as well as...what else did Robert?
The Rec Pain, the Recreation Plan.
The Recreation Plan, because I think we owe the people that much to have that bill...
The Rec Plan and the budget have been available for public review.
No, no, he said summary. He wanted the entire budget put out. And I think that, you know, it may be messy for some people to comprehend, but the people are paying their taxes, and they have a right to see what they're paying taxes for. So, you know, I just feel that they're deserving. We're here to represent them.
Yep.
But I really want them to be able to come in, and for those who can comprehend or have questions, now's the time to do it. And also for the trail, which Robert, and then with the open container bill. I had to think about this for a while, but if we walk around allowing open containers, and I really want this to be brought up for the next meeting if we could, the ability to get in there and really discuss between all of us on whether this would be a bad idea for Hannover, because it can get carried away, and I don't want to see Hannover become known for the fact that, you know, people can...because there was something, Bill, that I saw, I read it, in which it was proposed that somebody wrote something and said, "Oh, well, we can carry the container anywhere we want."
Right.
So we really haven't stipulated. Would that be all right?
Yeah, I think that starts with staff working with the police force in order to try to educate us on what our current laws are, what the comment, what we'll allow and that. Yeah, so.
And I would like to clarify that the budget is online under Finance and Taxation 2024 Budget for Public Inspection. So it's not, it may not be splashed on the front page. That's kind of the problem with our website, that documents get uploaded into different departments, and it's not listed as, here's new information. But the budget is, in fact, on the website.
Well, I like the idea that it's on the website, Chuck, and you're very good at the site, website. But there are people who prefer to see it rather than, they're not good online, so.
Is it not at the library? In the past, we have had at the library as well. But I just want to be clear that it's not that we're hiding it or not being transparent. It is on the website. It should be at the library, a copy as well as at the borough office. I can't speak to that, but...
Yeah, I just think we should have it located at several sites so it's easier for the people, and it's here at the borough. And if they have any questions, they can ask them.
Yep.
And I prefer the borough, because this is where everyone is, okay?
They can talk straight to the horse's mouth.
If that's okay with you, Chuck.
If they have questions, Jim can answer their questions.
Yeah, yeah.
It is on display here.
It would be done right there at that time.
I think just maybe a little clarification. Some of these things that are discussed are actually available. We don't typically interject comment, commentary, but like the Park and Recreation Plan has been upstairs and has been available since it was first recognized as being on the agenda in November. So it is here. It is here in this building. It is upstairs laying on the counter. It is available for public review.
It's the total. It's not just the summary, okay?
From the moment that it was available to Borough Council, it has been available here for, you know, for the public.
I mean, it's at the line item detail. I mean, it's eighty-seven pages long, right?
Yeah, line item, right. And the thing is that you're here. You're present in this building. So right there, they have the opportunity to have their questions answered. And I dislike that. I dislike it for the people.
Yes and no. I think the public has to be respective of staff having other commitments to meetings and possibly needing to do research in order to answer questions. So the last thing I think...
Could they write it down like a paper and submit it in?
Yeah, just organize their questions and then arrange a consult that somehow...
Would that be okay?
I'll let Manager Lewis jump in here.
Essentially, that's what Mr. Holt did. He put it through the write-to-know request, and Tim could speak to this. We just responded last week to him. In order to give him what he wants, we needed the 30 days. So he appealed that to the Office of Open Records, to which the Office of Open Records said, "They have a right to give you 30 days, and we are going to give him exactly what he wants, and he's going to get it by January 9."
Yeah, I had no idea about that particular...
Yep.
Okay, but thank you for that clarification, Marjorie. I really appreciate it.
And to clarify, what is that 30 days for? The budget?
Mm-hmm.
Or the budget's online?
The budget is, it's online and available for public review now. We are going to provide him with something that is line by line that he will be able to understand.
Right.
Okay.
And the rest of the public as well.
Right. Thank you, Marjorie.
Mr. Chairman, can I...
I'm sorry, folks, but no, no, public comment has ended. We've closed out, and we are moving to the closing of the meeting.
But sir, there were things that are said that are not true.
Can you...sorry, Mr. Holt.
There's another public comment coming up.
We had just finished it, sorry. Any other closing comments that were under reminders? Did you have any, Manager Lewis?
There's going to be a council photo on January 2 at the reorganization. Just a reminder to look your best and show up. Also, our mass information notification provider is changing. There is going to be a call from our current provider, Code Red or On... There is going to be a call from our current provider, Code Red or On Solve, that's going out tomorrow morning, asking people to sign up for the Civic Ready app. So it is legitimate. There is a newsflash on the website. There's also a link on the front of the website. We have also Facebook notifying everyone that if they want to continue to receive emergency and non-emergency notifications, they just have to sign up with Civic Ready. Unfortunately, we could not get the data from our previous vendor.
Dory, is that going to come through the phone again for the people?
If, yes, it can be either voice, email, or text, depending on what you signed up for, so that all of the people with the landlines will get this notification if they're not online.
So if they don't know how to do it?
Yeah, if they need help, our message tells them to, you know, call in if they have a landline, and we will make sure that they are signed up for the new one.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair requests a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We are adjourned, thank you.